All right, great. Thank you, everybody. That's those that take the team out there. I'm gonna call this meeting to order. It is April eighth, two thousand twenty-four, and this is the meeting of the ARPA Commission. And we have just done a little bit of a roll call. We have quorum, so we have Pete, Robin, Donna, Stu, me, and I saw Mike online. So I believe we have a quorum. We're missing Troy, Karen. Yeah, and Zucab, so, but that's good. Okay, we have enough people. All right, so we're just gonna jump right into the projects to close or increase. Now, I put three projects on the agenda that I think we could close or increase. The first one's ARPA fifteen, which is the Senior Center Coordinator position, which the selectmen made a request formally to increase that to three hundred. And I don't know if you read my email about why? Yeah, did that make sense? Yeah, Mike, were you able to read it?
Yeah, I skimmed it.
Yeah, so the, so the, the basic concept is that when it was approved, the, the idea was that we would fund a hundred percent the first year, sixty-six percent the second year, and thirty-three percent the third year. The math was done on what they thought would be the hourly rate and the number of hours, and that's what we approved was the thirty-four thousand. Then, when reality hit, it had a higher rate pay and more hours. So, the money got used up faster than we would have liked. Now, we need, I, I don't have it for me, forty-nine thousand, I think, to make it work.
Oh, yeah, yeah, yeah.
Yeah.
Yeah, it is.
Yeah, forty-nine thousand, two hundred and forty-one and forty-seven. Because next year is the third year. We're currently in year two. Next year is the third year, that's the year that we're budgeting for. Board of Finance is trying to find money anywhere they can. Board of Finance would like to see this increase as well, because that means that's eleven thousand dollars that you don't have to collect from the taxpayers. So, with all that said, does anybody wanna make a motion? You know, we can ask questions.
Oh, you need a motion? Do you have a specific motion written now?
Well, Donna's got them over. The fourteen thousand.
I move that we increase the corporation for ARPA fifteen by fourteen thousand, eight hundred and sixty-two dollars and forty-seven cents. Is that all you need for that motion?
Yep. All right. So, would you, so do you guys have any questions? No, you're good. We have the money, so we had put fifty thousand in contingency. We've used ten of it so far for increasing the dual thing. But we still have the rest of the money, and then there's still a whole other, I think, eighty thousand dollars that's, has not been appropriated yet, so.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Christina, I assured me the money was there before I made the motion of the board's selectment.
Yeah.
I didn't wanna step out too far.
And the, the thing is, we are now at the point where we have to appropriate all the money by December of this year. So, we, that's why we need to, like, get a good sense of how much all of these remaining projects are coming in at. Hopefully, some will return some funds, but I'm guessing they're all, the rest of them are gonna come in at or potentially over what, what was asked for, so. But this is not a, a big increase over it, and it, it will help a lot. Any questions, Mike? No. All right, ready to vote? All right, all in favor?
All right.
Anyone opposed? Nobody to post? All right, motion passes. So that one's one thing. Is somebody else in the waiting room?
Oh.
Oh, yeah.
Are they there? I don't see them.
The top blue button. The blue button.
Oh, admit.
Yep.
Sorry.
All right, so the next project is ARPA thirty, the Call for Service of Button Hill.
Okay. Good afternoon, everyone. Thanks for coming in today. I believe our original request was fifty-three thousand. And when we went out to bid, we got two bids. And we had a meeting of our board, and we determined that our, our best bid was the one for sixty-eight thousand, five hundred, which exceeds our allotment and our original requested amount. We did have a bid for a little less, but our fire commercial told us that our communication system was non-compliant. I have more disagreement with that, but I'm not gonna necessarily fight that one, especially since our board voted to go with the Call for Aid System or whatever we officially called it, is ARPA thirty, for sixty-eight thousand, five hundred dollars.
Okay. So, so that would be an increase of...
Thirteen-five? No.
No.
Fifteen-five?
Fifty-five.
Okay. Anybody wanna make a motion so we can discuss?
Fifteen-five the exact amount here?
Looks like it.
Yes, it is.
Yeah.
With the ARPA thirty?
Yep.
I move that we increase ARPA thirty by fifteen thousand, five hundred dollars.
Any second?
Oh, second minute.
Okay, so now, we can discuss. So if, if we were to say no, you have some other funds you could use?
Yes.
Yes, I, but you would like that, which I understand.
Yeah.
Anybody have any question? No.
Yeah, I, if I may add, that there are some bells and whistles we could add to this, but we're not going to ask for those bells and whistles at this time, like networking the floor fire panels, that's not part of this request, so.
Okay. Mike, do you have anything to ask? All right, so I think we'll vote. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Aye, aye, okay.
Oh, oh, I think I'm gonna abstain only because I don't know what the project entails, not having been in at the beginning of ARPA thirty.
Yeah, okay, well, you'll find out.
I will find out.
You wanna read the description? Okay.
Okay, I am sure it'll come to me whether I want it or not. That's why I'm abstaining instead of voting against it.
Okay. Okay, so that motion passes. And then, just for our minutes and for our updates, so you, you now can hire the contractor, and they're gonna do it soon?
Yes.
Like, when do you think you'll be done?
I would guess it's probably, do they put a timeframe in there?
I don't think so. Since the mileage of the, of the bid for the sixty days they requested beyond April third. So that's, that covers one of your requirements. But no, just one page is all the proposal is.
Yeah, I would, I would hope within the next three months. Okay, great. Great. You guys are on set. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
The next one is ARPA forty-one, which is the stove at the Senior Center, which we never officially closed that one. We talked about it last time. We, we told them that they were allowed to use the money to buy accessories. We add that, that, those words. I don't know if they did, what?
Sound like stratos, or is that like?
No.
Brings you stuff?
That had been certain sites that fit specifically on the burner.
Yeah, so they couldn't really use the stove without those.
Yep.
And, but, yeah. So, so, so do you think, did they do it? Did they buy it and they're done?
I hope so, 'cause I... I just don't see any activity that, I mean, I hope by now we just did it right.
Yeah.
And we can close it.
All right.
And return seven hundred and four dollars and twenty-nine cents.
Okay. Great. Does anyone wanna make a motion to? I'll do it. I'll make a motion to close ARPA forty-one in the amount of seven hundred and four dollars and twenty-nine cents.
Second.
Any discussion about that? All right, all in favor?
Aye. I'll vote for returning money.
Okay. Awesome, so that one passes, too. All right, we're on a roll. That's actually the one thing's been loaded up, but. Updates on the previously funded and open requests. I don't know, Pete, do you know anything about the ARPA ten? The town, town office building meeting room equipment?
Uh, I, I checked into that.
It was close to being done.
I think it was done, but I'm not sure. Let me, give me one more ARPA meeting and to make sure that that's closed out. Is that, that's under the auspices of, of Novus and...
Yeah, they were waiting on a couple of things, things to be delivered, so they would be invoiced for it, so they'd pay it, and that was, I don't...
Let, let me check into that. I know that they spent all weekend getting our, our internet backup online here, so.
Okay.
It was supposed to be an hour and a half, it only took them eight hours.
Wow. All right, so ARPA seventeen, eighteen, which is the walking track improvements.
That's true, they didn't expand on that.
Yeah, so, right now, Carl, our engineer, he's currently updating the contract docs. He had sent over a packet, but we weren't sure. We had a couple of questions about the prevailing wage, so he's updating those documents to include the prevailing wage. And then we should be good to go. I'm gonna, Mike, I'm gonna stop by your office tomorrow for the webpage, getting things up online, and then we'll be, we'll be good to start taking bids. I'm in the process of setting up a date for the pre-bid meeting. I just wanna make sure either Stu or Joe from the commission are there. They've done the commission longer than me, and they know more. But yeah, we're, we're in, we're in good shape, we're in, we're in good shape, and things are gonna be getting going soon.
Do you have a sense of how much it's in charge?
Not that it's changing until we get the bids back.
Yeah, okay. All right, but, so we're just gonna hope that two-twenty is enough.
And I, and once I do get the bids in, I can mad right away against you?
Yeah, okay, great.
We're not sure what prevailing wage is gonna do to us, but Carl says the more experienced contractors can usually manage that better than the mom and pops, and he's not too concerned about it, but we'll see.
I, I believe in our meeting, he said that most companies are already paying up around the prevailing wage, so we shouldn't, fingers crossed, it shouldn't be too, too much of an issue.
Okay. All right.
So the funds need to be spent by the end of this year?
No, no, just appropriate by the end of this year, but spent in the next two, yeah, next. I think we have two years, actually.
I don't see a problem with that kind of table at all.
Yeah, okay.
I know you're anxious to get some numbers.
Well, just, just to, like, get closure, 'cause we might have enough to approve a whole other project. Who knows? All right. Now, ARPA twenty-three, the summer camp supplement. That is gonna be ready to close at the end of this fiscal year? Yes. But there's nobody that's getting paid out of that in this fiscal year still, is, is there? Maybe in June, somebody will need to get paid?
So the camp starts July eighth.
Okay.
So it's kind of a weird spot with the fiscal year.
But it's completely spent now, right?
Yes, I'd have to check with Donna on that, but I think we're good.
What do you think, Donna? I, I think we could close it if it's all spent, and we can't spend anymore. There's, well, there's no opportunity to spend more.
Yeah, but we can't close until after July, right?
I don't know.
So there's a balance of three thousand, eight hundred ninety-two dollars, which I think is like the last...
For July first?
My staff.
Your staff?
Last amount of the step down.
Oh, okay, so next fiscal, they have three thousand dollars to spend?
Yes, I think that's what it is.
All right. Did we know that this...
Yes, I think they're budget.
Yeah, it is, there is a line.
Okay, okay, all right. I was gonna say maybe the Board of Finance would like to hear that, but that's not gonna help. There, no, all right, we already counted it. Okay, so we'll wait on that one, but that's, that's gonna be spent completely. The building with, ARPA twenty-seven, the building materials, that one, they already said it was, they're spending it down over several years, so that one is not that much, and we, we can't go back. Our public hearing expenses, if we do have to have another, so here's, here's the thing. If we wanted to hear a whole new, to us, project, we have to have a public hearing. So that's why we have this money to have the public hearing.
How much is in there, just so that you're on?
Uh, there is nine hundred and eighty dollars left.
That's skeeving right on the edge of public hearing lane.
Yeah.
It just costs us more than that for the next public hearing.
Really?
Yeah, 'cause we had to footprint the whole thing for the budget.
Oh.
And we had to go more expensive because we didn't, we started a day late.
Oh.
Or we started as soon as we could, which was a day late for the newspapers, because...
Yeah. Anyway, that was short. Yeah.
Literally.
Yeah, so I think we, we shouldn't, we should, that should be the last thing we close, once we know that we're done, so, so keep that one going. ARPA thirty-one, the Historical Society Archive Storage.
Okay, well, we've finally spoken with some contractors, and the gentleman that, uh, his company was, they're looking at boring the floor, doesn't wanna give us a, a final quote until we get all the junk out of the garage, which is kind of a, a hoarder situation. But we will do that to get them in to give us that final bid. The doors, uh, we will spend the fifteen, and it probably wouldn't go as far as we would have wanted it to, but it'll get us the floor, it'll get us doors, it'll actually seal up that storage area, and maybe some shelving, that would be about the extent of it.
Is it over at the Glacier Tavern?
Yeah, at the Glacier Tavern, the garage, just let you know, the garage is dirt.
Yeah, didn't they, weren't they originally porch stables back in the day?
They very well could have been, but like I said, the unique thing about the garage is that there is a bomb shelter.
Cool.
Over there.
I did not know that.
Yeah.
And I haven't looked at it.
Christina did not know.
Oh, we kept it tight, 'cause, you know, not a lot of people fit.
I'm seeing it from what hell was it?
But, so, yeah, just to let you know, we, we will be spending it hopefully all by, before the summer's out. We would like to be able to have things ready for, like, when the flea market, till when we open, you know, open the door and let people kinda have some progress.
If you think that you're gonna need a few thousand more, we could probably swing that. I don't wanna speak for everybody, but.
Well...
You see, you see how it works.
Yeah, no, I mean, whatever we have, what, it's... Whatever doors get picked, right now, we're looking at the doors that, that they're, that, well, they're taking a liking to, or about a thousand dollars each more than I, I took a liking to in the beginning. So, you know, that bites into something else, so.
Sorry, but don't you have to get, um, like, historic?
Yeah, we need to get blessing, and that's part of the reason the doors are a little more high-end, so the, you know, they, we maintain that, that, that period look. Even though the garage is not new, but still. So that's kind of why they're three thousand dollar doors instead of two thousand dollar doors, but that's perfectly fine. But we, we will, uh, we will spend what we have guaranteed, and we could always spend more.
Okay.
Boy, I've never heard of that before.
If we could.
But you, you haven't gotten the final bid yet, right?
No, no, 'cause we, we have to, there's just so much stuff in there, you know?
Yeah, I, oh, I understand, I was just wondering if you could come back.
Everybody's probably got that closet, and you open the door and go, I'm not gonna start this today.
Yeah, I, I've got that in my room.
Yeah.
Just one, just one. So, that's where we sit.
Okay, that's, that's great. All right, yep, I'd like to hear that. ARPA thirty-nine A, the repair of the building, library building structure. This is the one that we approved in January of last year. They thought they were gonna do it last spring, still not done. And then, the last I heard is that they're planning on doing it this spring. So, that's, um, thirteen thousand dollars that's tied up there for the rotating wall.
Oh, rotating wall.
Which is, um, the rotating wall that's, if you're looking at the building, it's on the right side. It's a big, tall wall. They, the, the other rotating wall that is over by the community room?
That holds up.
That's, that's also a problem, but they have a, a different request for that, and that, that they told CIP about, so. They have a few things that they could take care of over there, but hopefully, we will along. ARPA forty-three, recess equipment. Phil, I have that four, five hundred and forty-nine dollars was spent of that so far?
We have like two hundred dollars left, so I'm not sure why you have them.
Okay, it's just old, what I have.
Yeah, yeah.
Okay, and you're gonna spend it all, right?
Yeah, we will.
Okay, and when do you think you'll spend it all?
I told them by the end of the year.
Okay. By end of year.
One school that has money for that.
All right, so that one we'll be able to close. This is April. Probably not in June, but in August, we can close that one. But, yeah, hope it's coming back. ARPA forty-four, which is the Extended Learning Opportunities.
And that has four hundred dollars left that we, we estimate. We just had two very large programs. Ness came to Center School last week, and then Nature's Classroom is at Hall School today and tomorrow. So, those are huge dollars, and so we're coming off that. So, we believe it's around four hundred dollars left.
Okay.
And yes, we will spend it.
Okay.
We'll apply it to, to something else.
Something, okay.
Yeah.
Great. ARPA forty-five, the Economic Development Strategic Plan. Mike, can you tell us where you're at with that?
Yep, so that project is underway. The consultant is doing, uh, right now, started about two weeks ago, the stakeholder interviews, has had a few, uh, here at Town Hall, and then is planning for the first larger public outreach event in May. So I expect this will probably be completed at the end of the calendar year, approximately.
Okay.
And, um, for forty-six, the ECO three sixty is still, it's underway, it's tracking on schedule. We are waiting for the sort of second phase of their analysis of our documents. And we sent the most recent amendments, uh, over about four weeks ago, so, um, that one, that one is, is moving along. I think we could, we'll have that done before the end of the year.
Okay, and you have enough money for, for both of those things?
Yeah, so both of those contracts were set at a not-to-exceed based upon the appropriation, so we shouldn't go over for either.
Okay. Great. And then, the last one is ARPA forty-seven, the Facility Study.
Yeah, yeah, facilities, yeah, we have facilities.
Yeah. So this one, that, this one's...
I'd love to give you information that I don't have.
So, so basically, you have fifty thousand dollars to spend on a facility study.
Okay, thank you. Let me see what I can do about that.
Okay, I mean, there's a lot of talk about it. I don't know if it's gonna happen, you know? It, it definitely can be helpful, I'm sure.
You don't get quotes.
Yeah.
Yeah.
I, in fact, I was just gonna talk to Troy today about what buildings we own, didn't know. I don't even have a full list of the buildings we own.
Yeah.
You could probably use some of our R and P for the school facility studies.
Okay.
Yeah, just as a, as a starting line.
Yeah, don't need to reinvent the wheel, like, my boss used to tell me all the time.
Yeah, I mean, the thinking with this study was that it wasn't gonna be a very in-depth study. It would be more of just like taking inventory and of, of all the buildings.
Right.
And where we're at with some of the big things. So it wouldn't be like, you know, that you need to change filters, um, you know? And that kind of stuff, it's more like, it's gonna need a new room, it's gonna need a new furnace in three years, that, that sort of stuff. And it would help the CIP committee, for sure. But the thought was fifty thousand dollars, that was just based on what a study that was done in Mansfield cost?
Yeah.
So...
They, I think they have more buildings of all three.
Yeah, I mean, I don't know, I don't know anything about how the pricing came about, but. It's a good, it's a good chunk of change, and, and we need it, so. And that's basically it. So that's all the project.
Did it say something about that?
Yeah.
But it came about, obviously, under Erica, and, uh, it was really ambevish in terms of what are we gonna, what do we wanna do?
Oh, that was, I feel like I'm getting, I was just hoping that I...
Her intent was, I think.
Okay.
To do a facility study of all the buildings in the town. And I don't know what you can do with fifty grand, once you start looking at every building in town and what it means. They can get very in-depth, they can get very in-depth, just the schools themselves could be...
Right.
Use that money up.
Yeah.
Or a firehouse could use that, you know, there's a lot of work to be done in this town, obviously.
Yes.
But my concern is, are we just giving someone the money? I mean, we're gonna have to watch where this goes and what it's used for.
Right.
Right?
Well, we don't, the, the selectmen does.
I do.
You do.
Yes.
Yeah.
The, the thing is that it, it can't be all the buildings in town, it's only gotta be town-owned buildings, and, and the schools are already taken care of, correct? So then it's only the town-owned buildings minus the schools, and the fire departments don't belong to the town, so it's minus those. So I think we're down to about four or five buildings, where there's the animal control, public works, Old Town Hall, uh, Boy Scout Hall, and this building is...
Senior Center.
Senior Center.
Okay.
And the Old Town Hall, does the town own the Old Town Hall?
Oh, yeah, well, sort of.
Yeah.
We own all the problems.
Yes, we do.
But, but there was, there's an interesting report, and you might find it interesting, too, that we did, gosh, I must've...
About an eleven or twelve, I've heard.
Yeah.
In your office.
Oh, yeah, so they, so we got a grant from Southern Connecticut Historical Group to do an assessment of the Old Town Hall. And so they went through in, in extreme detail, what had to happen, what had to be painted, and how to do this, how to do that. And that was a great report, 'cause we used that for years. 'Cause it, it would just tell us, like, the most important thing is this. I think getting the windows redone was on there, and that's a big ticket item. And, but it wasn't a must-do, so, but they, like, ranked everything by you must do this, or this would be nice if you did, sort of thing.
You could even probably omit that from this study, um, because you have that to go by, and maybe you're just...
But yeah, now, by now, ten years has already gone by.
Yeah, that's true.
And I don't know about the roof on that building.
Um, yeah.
All right.
I don't know.
Sort of, we, sort of floor in the basement, you know?
Yeah, I remember, I remember looking at it.
And then the septic was also a lot of...
Septic is on steep, and it should be done two or three months? I'm supposed to have a meeting on that on Thursday. Go stand out in the grass and go, yeah, let's dig here.
Really?
Yeah.
Oh, I thought it would be really complicated for the green.
Yeah, I don't know. I know, that's why I'm meeting with an engineer, the engineer should know how complicated it is.
Yeah, and Carl doing it?
Yes.
So he is already...
Carl and Troy and I are going out there and look at the dirt.
First, I think the eight twenty-four's been done, all that thing, I think.
Yeah.
That's, I started that before I moved to the earth.
Okay.
I think. Or I didn't, I saw that, I worked with...
But, yeah. So that's...
Thank you for clarifying what buildings are actually eligible.
Right, and I think, I think, I'm, I'm pretty sure that's a good list. I, we might own a building someplace else that I don't know about yet, because that happens occasionally.
Dogtown, did you say that?
Yeah, I said the Dogtown, we should...
And then, Scout Hall.
Scout Hall, yes, I knew.
I mean, I don't know if it counts as a building, it's the shed up at the transfer station, and then there's the bus, the bus lots of Trailers twenty-two.
Do we own that? Yes, we do.
We do.
Well, I guess we own the trailer at the other fire department now, too, so.
Yeah.
Just we...
Got a, got a whole week going.
Camper, the trailer, there's a difference.
I'm sorry.
So, all right.
That's all I know.
Well, that's, that's there. Well, that's, that's there. We'll, we'll wait and see how that goes back. But of course, if if you get into it and you think you need more money.
Let me.
Like, the next time would be a good time to ask.
All right.
Um, okay, so then the future of ARPA commission, I just put that on there because um, we had talked about, like, we're, we're, we're in the wind down phase, but it it's kind of complicated because we, we definitely have to approve at least one more project and we definitely have to add money potentially to some more, some more. So there's that. Um. And if, I think if we just continue every other month, we're probably fine. But then it it will get to a point where we.
It'll be time to turn it over to the board of fire.
Yeah.
I don't think that time has arrived.
Yeah, and then the question is, how do we do it too, like legally? Because it was created at a town meeting, we might have to have a town meeting to disband it. But we're not there yet.
So we better add another eight hundred dollars to that hearing thing.
Oh, yeah, yeah, see? See, that's who's thinking about that. I didn't think of that, but yeah, um, so.
And it also depends on the charge of the committee, because sometimes the ending date of the committee is in the charge.
Yeah, I read it. It says until the charge of the committee is done.
Okay.
So, which could be subjective.
Yes.
You know, yeah.
Could save us a hearing.
But I think, you know, it, cause there's, once we approve all the money, which we have to do by December of this year. Um, there's the tracking of it and the recording of it, which basically passed to Donna. Um. I don't think there is any, and once we've appropriated, I don't think there is anything else for us to do. Um, but, but close them out, but. I don't know, we'll see. All right.
Did I have another one on there other than buildings? Did I have, was the floors in there? Floors for the common room, was that an ARPA thing or was that a a CIP thing?
It's a CIP thing.
Okay.
Yeah, and you had taken that and moved it to the next year.
I did, which is a good thing, cause we tore up the floor on Tuesday.
Yeah, it's, it looks like it's torn up.
Well, we're about to get a more building up there, about to get storage for the registrars, any day now.
Good. So that brings us to present to speak. Is anyone here present to speak? No. Arthur? He's being quiet.
Yeah.
I I guess I will ask when you might expect new applications to be accepted?
Well, I don't, so the way things are are going, I'm not sure if we're gonna, because we have two projects that are, have already been to public hearing and we haven't, we're just tabled them. So they're ready to be approved if we have the funds. And one is the playground resurfacing, which is ninety thousand dollars at Center School. Um.
Cause that's more than we have left.
That's more than we have left, yeah. And then another one, but they might take half, partial funding. Um, although the board of ed does not have a lot of money.
Yeah.
So, um, the other one is a library project and I forgot, I think it's the gutters. Um, so that one is in like the forty thousand dollar range.
Cause we were, we were hoping to get in the next round of funding, some help with putting in a generator to power our sewage ejector pump that pumps the sewage from the senior center in Willington Woods in our complex up to the septic system.
And I think that's just repaired and there's a new contract for that.
Right, but there's no power if we lose the grid. We can power the water going in. Pump the water going out.
Oh, how much is that?
Yeah, I, I mean, we got a bid for a more powerful generator at one point for fifty or sixty thousand dollars, but I'm hoping we can come in much less than that. Come in around thirty and I think we're willing to kick in a little bit for it, so.
But is that one of those, like, it'd be great to have things, or is it like really bad that we don't?
Great to have, and it's, it's great to have when the uh, pump chamber overflows onto the lawn with sewage.
Which came real close the last time when the pump failed.
Ah.
Yeah, let's, let, I think, I think that may be under contract now. Let's, let's check into that, check with Troy. And Whitewater's got a new contract for the whole septic end of that.
Yeah.
Because we ran into that problem a couple of weeks ago. And one of the pumps went bad, so now we've got a whole new contract for pumps and
Pump the water in.
Power and all kinds of stuff, so.
Power too.
I I don't know if the power's involved or not, but it it, it may very well be, because they, they're worried about yeah, everybody's septic backing up.
Yeah.
And they took that lid off, it wasn't pleasant. Just.
And that's only saying. Six years old, seven years old. Yeah, um. So, uh, and then the power for that runs is a hundred and ten volts and it comes from button hill.
All right, twelve. Yeah, let's check, let's, let's check with Troy and the and the contractor on that. Well, I I don't know what we can do, but let's, let's see where we make sure we're on reporting and when we ask.
Okay.
That's all.
Yeah.
All right.
Whenever we ask, if it's appropriate to ask, we don't know.
Yeah, whether we're even gonna have the opportunity to ask, but that sounds like something that, you know, pumping septic is tied up by a list of things that needs to be done.
Yeah.
But important.
Important.
Yeah, but there is, I want to just remind you, there is a generator in the pump house. That, to, that's what you're saying, to get the water in.
That's the water, yeah, that's the water supply generator and the fire sprinkler system.
Yeah.
Uh, pressure generator.
That can't be hooked up somehow to do the pumping out too, like maybe adding just a connection?
Extension cord?
Yeah. Well, some sort, like maybe, I don't know, wiring, maybe it might be cheaper to, or something.
Yeah.
I'm a little mystified at how we get the power from there to building twelve and then down, or even there, down, is uh, may cost more than a separate generator. By the time you start digging a basketball, I don't know.
Okay.
All right.
Food for thought.
Yeah, that is. Uh, anyone else present to speak?
Something in the same sense.
Is that it? That's all our comments? All right, well, I think we're ready to adjourn.
I move to adjourn.
One second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Thanks.
Goodbye, everybody.
Bye. Thanks for coming in here all.